Good morning. Welcome to Long Live Alternative Parties Podcast. Free Press Media Press Inc. and Alternative Parties Books Publishers sponsors this podcast. I'm Andrew Bouchard.
Welcome to Long Live Alternative Parties Podcast. Today, friends, we have another exciting guest in our podcast. Her name is Erin Yoder. She has run for office with the Libertarian Party and she has a lot of thoughtful things to share with us today. So, welcome to the podcast, Erin.
Well, thank you so much for having me.
We are glad to have you. If we could get started by you kindly giving us an introduction to yourself, a brief biographical sketch.
Okay, so I'm a mom of six, I'm married, I have six kids, and I live in Ohio.
Okay. Are you, can you tell us where in Ohio? My parents grew up in Cleveland, so Ohio interests me.
Yeah, I'm about an hour from Cleveland. I live in, um, a sort of small town called Green. There's about twenty-five thousand people here, so it's not super small, but it's not super big either. Though they are, in fact, working as hard as they possibly can on that.
Ah, interesting. So, at the top of the show, I mentioned that you ran for office. Would you kindly tell our audience what office you've run for before and what the experience was like?
Okay, so I ran for council at large, which is a, a, a good position. Um, there were three spots open and five people that were running. So, council at large means that I'm over the whole city and not just one, one area, which is considered a ward. So, here, I don't know what it's like in other states, but here we have different wards. And so, um, I was going for overall instead of specific wards. We do actually have four wards, but I don't want to be, I didn't want to run over the ward. I wanted to run over the city and represent everybody, not just one group.
Sure.
So, and I had a lot of fun, I'll be honest with you.
Okay. So, what type of fun did you have? What was it like?
Um, it was very, this is my first time I'd ever run for anything. Um, I had, I'd met a lot of really interesting people. I met a bunch of new friends. I learned a lot, like I learned how much I hate and love Canvas. I actually used a lot of stuff, um, from our local, we, we have trade schools that are like a high school with a trade inside. And there are a lot of students, one of which was one of my daughter's really good friends. Her, she helped me out so much. Her name's Delaney, she's a great, great young lady, uh, she's gonna do a lot. But she helped me with my website, took a lot of pictures of me, and that kind of, um, and all for free. And she kind, we kind of got started with that. And that was like, you know, for me, just beginning. And I, because I'd never done this before, I didn't know what to do. I, you know, um, it's not that I didn't want to do it, but I did get talked into it a little bit. Um, but that's because, I'm not gonna lie, I was a little bit nervous about, you know, we all, when you hit a certain age, and I'm forty-six, we all have a past, okay? That's just a fact. I don't care who you are, I don't care what you do, it just is the truth. But the problem is that, you know, I had been married before, and I had kids. And I was, as a woman, we get judged very much on what our lives were, what we did, how much we got paid. Did we work from home? Like, what was our value? Our value is very basic when you, when people look at it. And I was actually told by quite a few men in this area that they would not be voting for me because I was a woman, which I found astounding in this day and age, but also kind of comical. And I think they expected me to get mad when they said that, but I didn't. I just kind of laughed, because, one, it was bizarre to even say that. Like, if you're not gonna vote for me, okay, don't. And that was like the first thing, first foray, really, into politics as a female. And here I am trying to get people to sign the petition just so I can get on the ballot. This wasn't even asking anybody to vote for me, right? This was just so I could get my name on the ballot. But he felt that he had to come up to me and say, "I'm not gonna vote for you because you're a woman." I found that hysterical, I'm not gonna lie.
Oh.
It's unnecessary, you know? And, you know, that, I knew I was going to have opposition being a female, you know, among other things. So, I don't have anything bad in my background, like I've never been to jail, you know, nothing like that.
Good.
You know? But even so, how many women who've been to jails have been elected? And how many men who've gone to jail, been arrested with hookers and drugs, got elected or re-elected? But how many women have that? You will find either A, none, or very few. Again, I don't do drugs, I don't even drink, but still, as a female, that's a little disconcerting, don't you think?
Sure.
So, I mean, that was kind of, but it just, it was really, it was really different than I thought it would be. And I think I was really innovative. I liked to, I didn't use a ton, I didn't have a huge budget, you know? I had family and friends that supported me, that donated ten, twenty-five, thirty dollars now at this time. To help me.
Well, that's good.
Mm-hmm. It was a, it was a, what do you call it? A, a grassroots movement. And honestly, I did really well. I got thirty-three hundred votes my very first time ever running, which is a lot.
Respectable, yeah.
In this area, mm-hmm. Yeah, the last person that got into office as a council at large, they only had like twelve hundred votes.
Oh, my, so you got way more than they did, yet you still didn't win?
Correct. There were fi, there were five of us, all, the other ones were all, um, Republican men. So, and I was a libertarian female. Yeah, they're kind of stacked against me, but I still did really well. And I came up with innovative ideas. Most of the people that ran didn't even have any plans for the city. They didn't even have any ideas of what they wanted to do, what we could improve, nothing. I was told I had to have a plan, and then when we were at the debate, nobody else had a plan. And here I am, like, talking to all these different companies to try to get something going. So, just see what we can do. You know, I had, I had an idea, saying it would have worked or it would, you know, I don't know. You don't know what you don't know until you have known, until you've learned.
So, you're, you're saying you had a plan. What were some of the issues of this race?
So, one of them is, we had a total, except for one lady on there, um, it was, it's a very much an old boys' club. It really is.
Oh, sounds like it, yeah.
And I've listened to them and how they talk to people. They're very, I've actually spoken in front of them before, and I found them, most of the guys on there to be kind of condescending. And they really didn't care what the citizens had to say. And the one, the last thing I spoke in front of them, I told them, "We voted you in, and we can vote you back out." Because I'm a firm believer in term limits. Unfortunately, our glorious city here, um, they have a term limit, but they can be circumvented. So, what you can do is you could run for, let's say, two terms as a councilperson, right?
Uh-huh.
And then after you're done, you could run for mayor, okay? And then you could go back to a, a council position, um, after four years of not being on the council. And then it would be, that, that would be, you would get to start your two terms over again. Same thing with mayor, you can, which is what the current mayor did. Uh, well, let me clarify that. Our, our mayor that we have, he actually ran to be on city council again, you know? Um, he, he ran against me, and he was one of the ones. So, he went from being a mayor to a city councilperson. And the, and one of those people that ran for mayor, both of them actually, were both city council people. And, um, so, yeah. You can, and your true terms only expire. So, you could literally run councilperson, mayor, councilperson, mayor, councilperson, mayor.
So, they have to be consecutive in order for you not to be able to run again?
Mm. Yeah. And what they need to do is set that loophole that you only ever get two terms as a mayor.
Yes.
And two terms as city council, but there, that's not gonna happen. Sadly, that will not be happening. I, I think that loophole that the city of Green should one hundred percent close, but they won't.
Hmm.
And that's unfortunate.
Yeah. It doesn't sound like it's much use.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it is what it is. This is a, an old boys' club in this city. And you either have to be a woman who doesn't talk or agrees with them in order for you to keep your position on council. And, you know, that's a shame, because women have a lot to say. We have so much representation in this city, but there is not, now that, um, the other woman, her term is coming up, she won't be able to run again, and she's not gonna be the mayor. So, there will be no female representation whatsoever on our council. And that's unfortunate. And you know, um, a lot of people, they think that libertarians are Republican-like, which I find just ridiculous. Because I'm definitely not a Republican, I'm opposite of that. There are some things that I like, like fiscal responsibility, but let's be realistic. You and I both know, there is no such thing as a Republican or Democrat. They're Republiques. They're the same damn thing. All they do is fuss and fight, and they get people, you know, against each other, but we still have lobbyists. We still have all this money coming into Congress. I mean, our presidents aren't allowed to own stock, but our congresspeople are, their families are. You should never be able to get rich working for, for the government. That is supposed to be a, a civil position, you know? Like, if you look at our original constitution, they didn't pay the people all year round. You know that, right? The congresspeople? They only paid them for the time that they served. So, you had people on Congress, they would, you know, after they would farm, they would come into town, and they would, you know, vote or whatever they needed to do on bills. Now, we have bills so big, people can't even read them before, you know, they just become bloated. And we spent six hundred million dollars, I mean, excuse me, six hundred billion dollars to the Ukraine of our tax dollars, which I think is insane. That's completely, completely ridiculous, and what a waste. What a waste. We could be investing that in our country, not in another country. We have so much, so many things here.
So, you're, are you a, a non-interventionist in the affairs of other nations?
No, we shouldn't be. Look, I understand that we have allies, but we are not everybody's big brother. We are not the hammer in the middle of the night when your boyfriend beats you up and your brother shows up with a baseball bat to hit him. Uh-uh. That's not our job, and we can't afford that anyways. I mean, we, we are like a whole nation. When did we become the nation of everybody's big brother? Because other people are not being held to the same account. And also, we start a lot of wars. I'm gonna be honest. I truly believe, I voted for Jo Jorgensen, okay? And I'm a hundred percent love what she said, when she said, "We should be armed and neutral." We are paying money to every country. We're, we are subsidizing their lifestyles by having our military forces all over the country, all over the world. We should have, we should be armed and neutral, and we should be worried about what's going on in our country, not everywhere else. Because most countries have to do a lot in order to get here, right?
Most what have to do a lot?
And they have to take a boat, they have to take a plane that lasts a long time to go over any ocean to get to our country, right?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. We aren't, we don't need to be fighting, look, we're not fighting with Canada, and we aren't fighting with Mexico unless the government starts that.
Yeah.
They, they should be our allies.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be the way it is right now. It really shouldn't. We do not need to be taking care of all these other nations. They don't take care of us. All they do is complain about the United States, they want to take away our gun rights, they think that we're too violent, but yet they're out here asking for our help over and over and over again. I'm just saying, I don't think that that's the way it should be.
No.
We have a president, right now, who has a son with a drug habit, who has already leaked documents, and is doing coke in the White House. The last few presidents and presidential elections we've had are embarrassing.
True.
They're terrible. They're no different, Trump is no different than Biden. Trump just has a, a better catchphrase. But again, we have no females, we're not getting people that are under the age of sixty-five to even run. We have all of these older men, not even women, that are representing, trying to represent our country, and they don't even understand half of what's going on.
Sure.
We need term limits in Congress, we don't have them. We, we need to take care of our country. And most people, they don't want to do that. They want to live in a bubble because it's easier. And I agree, it is easier. It doesn't make it right.
No, true. So, it sounds like what happens in Green is what's happening at the nation as a whole. It's a microcosm for what's happening in the nation.
It is, because our city used to be a farming community. When we, when I moved here thirteen years ago, I moved here because I got an acre of land and a house for seventy-four thousand dollars. Fourteen years ago, actually.
Wow.
But I got an acre of land and a house for seven, four-bedroom house for seventy-four thousand. My house is worth way more now, but trust me when I tell you, I would never buy this house for the amount that I could sell it for now. That's insane. You know? And they have so many zoning laws, "I can't have chickens here." Akron, I can have chickens and pigs and goats in my backyard in Akron. I don't even have to have an acre. I don't even have to have a quarter of an acre in Akron, still get to have that. We've gone away from being self-sustaining with gardening to we rely on all these prepackaged foods and other people that tell us how we feel on TikTok or the Facebook or Instagram. But we don't even care what our state is doing. We don't even care that we've had a major, major scandal in our government where we were being completely ripped off by Ohio Energy, First Energy, that's in Ohio.
Oh.
Now, we care that so many political people that we voted into office were a huge part of that. And now we have to pay more money because this company got cited, but as consumers, we have to pay more money because they screwed up. They didn't have to give any money back to the consumers for the damage they did. They don't care. You know, people don't vote. They don't vote where they live. Um, when we, when I had the election, and I had thirty-three hundred people vote for me, which is amazing. I think Justin got like five thousand or fifty-five hundred, something like that. Um, he like beat out the other, the other guys, like, he was like weighing above. But I'll be honest with you, Justin State is one of the best men I know. Very good guy, very loving husband, he's an air, he was in the Air Force. He does stuff at the school for the kids. He's a, he's a really good guy, and honestly, I would absolutely have loved serving with, on the city council with him. He absolutely deserved that. He's a homegrown kid from, I should say, a man, not a kid, but he has such a baby face. But he was a really good guy. He absolutely deserved to win. I knew it was gonna be hard going against him. You know? He's, he really is a good guy and deserves to win. But people don't get out and vote. What they did was, they came out, they voted for abortion, of course they should have, and they voted for, and then people think it's an abortion bill, it's not. It's a woman's healthcare bill. Because women, we are getting doctors who will not take care of women, who are miscarrying at that moment. They want to wait until the baby is dead because they don't want to go to jail or be fined or anything like that, you know? Which I don't, I don't blame them. And so, because of things like that, we're getting, women care facilities are leaving. They're going awa, they're not even a part of things anymore because people are afraid that if they take care of women, take care of a woman who's having a miscarriage, that they're gonna go to jail, or they're gonna get, lose their license. Because that's what states are currently trying to do right now. So, it means that more women are dying, more women are getting hysterectomies because they don't have a choice, because they're not taking babies that they should. Me voting for that because I'm pro-life for myself, I voted for that because nobody on this earth should ever tell another person, ever, what to do with their body. That goes for vaccines, people who want to die by assisted suicide, maybe they have brain cancer, or a tumor, or they have stomach cancer. If you have never watched a person that you love die a horrific, slow death from cancer eating away at their organs and brain, I don't want to hear about it. I don't want, I don't want to hear that you can't understand that that person, their metabolism is no longer processing drugs for pain. So, for me, it's all about my body, my choice, and that goes for everything, all of it. This is my body. Huh?
Across the board, across the board, it sounds like.
Yeah. Um, I also voted for legalizing weed, a hundred percent. I should be able to grow what I want on my own property. I pay the taxes, which, that's a whole nother conversation, but, you know? Medical, marijuana and, and things like that. Honestly, I feel like we have a prohibition problem and not a drug problem. Well, you'll have other people saying that, but it's not a drug problem. What it is, is a prohibition problem and a mental health crisis. And everybody in this country can agree with that, that this addiction is a problem. And it doesn't matter if you're addicted to sex, or drugs, or alcohol. When you're an addict, any of those can happen. You could be an alcoholic, and because you're no longer involved in alcohol, you could switch to a, a sex addiction, because it's not about the drug. It's about the dopamine hit in your brain, right?
Yeah.
And so, it's a mental health issue. And that's how Portugal has dealt with theirs. They decriminalized drugs, and now they can help people. The problem is, is that our country is a reactive country. And instead of exploring other options and how to help people better, we don't do any of that. We don't. We don't take care of our people the way we should, and that's really sad.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know what your views are, that's one thing that we haven't really talked about.
I agree.
I don't know what you stand on abortion.
I, I agree with you on the, what you're talking about with the drugs. I, I do think, I do think opioids are harmful, so I don't think we can argue that they're not harmful, yet I don't think.
Oh, no, they are.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't, I think you're right that it doesn't do anybody any good to make them illegal and throw users into prison and criminalize that, so that only makes the problem worse.
Yeah, because victimless crimes should never be cut, should never be prosecuted. Like, let's say I come to you and I want to buy ecstasy. I've never done ecstasy in my life, but let's just say today is the day, okay?
Yeah.
Um, and I buy it from you. I don't die, I have a trip, whatever. But you go to jail, I go to jail. Why should that happen? You provided me with the service. Now, here's the thing, um, drugs are a problem for families. But the problem isn't the drugs, it's the addiction.
Okay.
People, we have to help people. I want to help people. But guess where the opioid crisis came from? It, it wasn't from street drugs, right? It was from doctors that were given permission by the FDA to prescribe pain medication to kids and adults over and over and over again. Because doctors were, were having, you know, these pharmacies, pharmacy salespeople were coming into offices and just raining money on people, just doing all kinds of stuff, and parties, and all kinds of crap, right? And then you have these doctors who don't know really, or don't care, what the side effects are. And so, they just continuously provide you with this medication. And so, all of a sudden, now it's a problem. Now, you have people who had back pain or had an accident, now they couldn't get off of this. So, then they started finding other ways to get that hit. That's where we brought in, and that is because of the government being involved, allowing the FDA to do stuff, you know, that, that suited all of these other people, but nobody cared about the actual people taking the medication. Doctors and pharmacy reps were getting rich, lobbyists were getting rich, congressmen were getting rich. I mean, do you, I don't, you have to remember how in the nineties, don't you remember buses? Like, I live in Ohio, but you're close enough to the Canadian border where I guarantee you they had buses that would take you into Canada to buy your medication. Do you rem, do you remember those?
I don't re-
A lot of, or people went.
Okay. I heard more about people going to Mexico than Canada.
Oh, that's wild.
Yeah, it's cheaper in Mexico, so a lot of people like to-
Well, Canada too, at the time, it was the same, in Canada.
Okay, I vaguely, I remember a little bit.
And I always thought, well, hey, like, go on up there. I mean, it was literally cheaper for people to get on a bus, travel four hours, and get their prescriptions in an entirely different country so they could afford that. Do you know who changed all of that? The FDA decided that we couldn't do that. Not that we shouldn't, didn't put out a warning, they just decided, no, the United States, these people, they can't be trusted to get their own medication. Nope. They took away your choices, our choices as a country, on where we wanted to get our healthcare. People literally go out of the country because it's less expensive to get certain things fixed in, let's say, Turkey or Costa Rica, and you get an amazing vacation in addition to surgery. And our country also has huge malpractice. You know why? Because they're not, because they're not, they're not taking care of what they need to take care of. They're not learning how to be better doctors. They just have more expensive malpractice insurance. That's crazy to me, isn't that wild to you?
Yes. How do you think we can fix that? Do you think there's regulations that are causing this, or how would a libertarian-
There is a lot of regulations, and on some things, there absolutely should be. I'm not the libertarian that's gonna be like, "There should be anarchy, and there should be no, none of this, and none of that." You know what? We absolutely have to have regulations. I am not a fan of the FDA, but I know why it was put in place. And it was put in place in nineteen thirty-four, I think it was, by FDR, Franklin Delano Roosevelt, because people were dying from medications that people were just making, and then being like, "Oh, yeah, this is, this'll get you better." And then they were drinking this stuff that was like, I don't know, let's say, anaphrizin water, right?
Yeah.
And so, people were like, "This is gonna make me better," and it was killing them. So, I understand why he did what he did. And I'm not saying that we don't need recommendations or regulations, but you can tell people, this is what's gonna happen. I mean, we have warning labels on everything in our life. Let people be adults and make their own decisions, informed decisions on what they want to do. Because the thing is, is you are basically, a lot of people in this country have put their head in a sand because it's easier to live that way. So, first things first, people have to wake up and they want, have to want to control their own self, not be told what to do by the government or where, but they have to be, they have to learn how to take care of themselves. That's hard for some people. A lot of people have been told what to do their whole life, right, by the government. The government knows best. I can promise you, there is not a government on the face of this earth that knows better how to take care of you than you, period. So, having these regulations, a lot of other countries, like England, for example, they have universal healthcare. But it's not, everybody thinks it's great, but it's really not. It's really not that much different than ours. Same thing with Canada. People need to really look at Canada and see, you know, why they think it's so great. Because honestly, I worked with Canada, with people in Canada for five years, and trust me, it is not a better system. A lot of them still have to have private insurance for stuff. But one of the things that we can do is, we need to have somebody that can negotiate or force these, um, country, companies, sorry, companies to negotiate, right, with, um, let's say, England, when they, when they want hip, right? Let's say they, I, they say, "Okay, we want, we're gonna get all the hips that we can get." Let's say they, I, they say, okay, we want, we're gonna get all the hips that we can get, you know, brand new hips for hip replacement. But we wanna make sure there is only a ninety-eight percent failure, I mean, a ninety-eight percent success rate. We'll give you a two percent failure rate, right?
Okay.
And then we cannot, we want them for X amount of dollars. Well, these pharmaceutical companies comply, and they give them these hips for less, right? Who eats that cost? Does it really matter? Because most of it is America, but either way, it doesn't matter because that country, they got what they wanted, right? And people are able to afford hips. Here in our country, we can afford that. You know, I just had to have a surgery, but it took me five years, six years to get this, surgery I knew I needed. You know why? I couldn't afford to take the time off until now. And, and I think that's a problem for everybody in this country, well, most everybody. Then you have things like crony capitalism, which is a big problem. You have corporate welfare, like companies like Walmart, and J.T. Morgan Chase Bank, and Wells Fargo. They get, they get help from the government, because God forbid we let these, some of these banks fail, right?
Yep.
Because they made terrible choices. But none of that matters. The American people have to eat that cost, right?
Yes, their taxes.
But you, right, and, and higher rates, and people can't afford that, you know? And so you have people that can't afford to, like, I think it was, what's her name, Katie something or other? She, I think she's a Democrat, she was talking to J.T. Morgan Chase. And she's like, so if you make sixteen fifty an hour, and this is what this woman has to live on, and that guy's attitude was, who gives a shit, right? He didn't even care. He did not even care when he was testifying in front of, um, with, in the hearing. And, you know, you have these banks that are getting record profits, right?
Yep.
Or they're giving their CEOs, COOs, whatever, you know, huge, million, multimillion dollar bonuses. And then you've got, let's say her name is Sally, and her kids, and she's only making sixteen fifty an hour, which is, by the way, what my seventeen-year-old daughter makes working at other companies, like Bob Evans. And, um, and you have, you know, McDonald's paying their employees sixteen dollars an hour, and here's this woman making a teller position, and in addition to that, she can't afford to pay for insurance, right? Even though you're supposed to have it, you can't pay for it. So she has to go on Medicaid, or she has to substitute her, um, income with SNAP benefits. But all of that cost is put back on people, it's called the working poor. My husband and I should be in, in middle class. We're not in middle class. We can't even afford to get to full-on middle class. Because our bills have gone up so much. Even though I make more money and he makes more money, none of that makes any difference. It's like we're, we're back five years ago.
Uh-uh.
And it's not because I don't have a good job, I do have a good job. It's because you have companies that we are subsidizing, and we have companies that, um, don't take good care of their people. And they don't have to. Because the government doesn't make them accountable for their screw-ups. They make us accountable. They make us accountable for a bank screw-up, and still allow, even though the bank screwed up, they still allow them to, um, to be in business, to run their business, and to not have to pay employees, or, or screw up a pension, right? I mean, what are your thoughts on that? I mean, don't you think we need to end corporate welfare?
Oh, sure, sure. Yeah, a lot of people conflate that with capitalism, but libertarians tell us, no, that's not true capitalism.
It's not capitalism, mm-mm, absolutely not. Through capitalism, I mean, really the free market, is when you have people who are able to barter however they wanna pay, whatever that company does. Let's say you decide you wanna go to a bakery, right?
Yep.
And this bakery is a giant, uh, feminist bakery, and they don't wanna bake your cake, right? But you want them to bake your cake. Now, do you think we should force the bakery to bake your cake? Or do you think that you could po, put a blast, oh, I don't know, Facebook, TikTok, whatever you wanna do, you put a blast out, that this company does not cater to men? And so, why, then they have to decide at any point if they're gonna keep, you know, doing what they've been doing, right?
Yep.
Are they still gonna be this company that they, you know, that doesn't cater to men? Or are they gonna fold? See, that's, that's free market. If you have, like, we, we bail out companies like Exxon, right?
Yep.
But we won't bail out Jim Bob down the street, who has, you know, student loans because he was trying to do better. But we'll bail out Exxon, who's poisoning people, right? We'll bail out BP, we don't make them. Look at, look what happened with the, with the, um, so I live in Ohio, I know you, sorry. I live in Ohio, and East Palestine, you know what happened with that, right?
Uh, E, East Palestine, I-
Ohio, where they had the train that, um, and they started the fire to, um, burn out the chemicals, but found out it was something else, and it's like, all this kind of-
Yeah, pardon my ignorance, can you explain that to us? I'm not familiar with that, so other people might not be either.
Okay, so, back earlier in twenty twenty-three, um, East Palestine, Ohio, had a railway that went through it, and a huge train derailment, okay? It happened in like, uh, February, okay, of last year. And so, when it, when it caught on fire, okay, it was already, by the way, it was already carrying hazardous materials, and it flipped in, in Ohio, okay? The railway cars, um, were doing what was called a controlled burn of several other cars, okay? And what happened was, they released, um, like, some chemicals into the air, and it caused people to get violently ill. It put chemicals that will last, I don't know, a hundred years into the soil, into the water. The plume was so large, it went all the way down the Ohio River. And people in, in like Kentucky and Cincinnati were getting chemicals from that. That's how bad this was, okay? Um, so, the EPA came in, and by the way, I already have issues with the Ohio EPA, and I think they need to be regulated, but that's neither here nor there right now. But, um, so, what happened was, they were trying to say that this, these chemicals weren't that bad. Well, then people started getting these chemicals out of the water, 'cause you could literally see water bubbling, like the creek water, it should never bubble, I promise. And they were taking all of these readings, and they, they had not tested them correctly. Well, when, what ended up happening is other people started sending their stuff in, and this, it was all coming back to these terrible, horrific chemicals. People had to move, they had to leave. You can literally get land in East Palestine for pennies on the dollar. It disrupted, this is where a lot of farms are, by the way, in Ohio.
Oh.
So it disrupted so much of people's lives, people had to move away. Um, they had to be tested, they had to be given all kinds of stuff. I mean, the stuff that, the, the amount of stuff that they had was horrific. You should really look it up, it's terrible. And there's all these conspiracy theories, which I'm sure are true, 'cause I don't trust our government at all. Um, and I'm not a freak, I'm not a conspiracy theorist, but I do believe that sometimes where there's smoke, there's fire. Sometimes, you know, it's a forest fire, not just a little one. But it was terrible, a terrible situation. But the, the Ohio EPA kept telling people, oh, you're safe, oh, everything is good. And what helped was people in East Palestine were literally sending TikToks to their families. They were posting about what was happening. And that's how it got the message out, because they tried to bury this. God's honest truth. They tried to bury it for days. And people were posting all these videos about what happened, and how bad it was, and how people were getting sick, and kids were getting sick. And they had stuff like vinyl chloride, and, and benzene residue. These are things that will stay in your body forever, and never leave, and actually infect your generation after that.
Yeah, that's, that's not good.
And guess what? Guess who did not have to pay to clean up that situation? It wasn't the railroad, and it damn well wasn't the company that had all of that stuff. Because they felt that, oh, they had, they were safe. It was terrible. It was absolutely terrible, but the government bailed them out. There's only a few people who own railroads in the United States. So all of those railroads belong to a very, to, to very few people. And they are not maintained, their records are not the same as what you and I would have to show. I mean, that kinda stuff is crazy, right?
Yep.
But it's the truth. And then you have to wonder, who should be paying it? Don't you think the company should be required to have insurance, or pay for that? Why are we bailing tho, these companies out? You know? Why can't we allow them to falter? And then we can turn around, and either, eh, somebody else can ru, to do that company, or maybe companies should take better care of what they're doing. Because we keep bailing them out, and it's always the taxpayer that has to suffer, that's us. So why should we, in a free market society, these companies would be required to carry insurance, like you do as a driver, right? And let's say you're driving around, you have to have car insurance, right?
Okay, yeah, sure.
Okay, so if you get into an accident, and it's your fault, who pays for that?
You would.
And the insurance company, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if these companies had to pay astronomical premiums, do you think that they would allow half the crap that goes on to go on?
Probably not.
No, because that's the problem. They would be held responsible for the things that they've done. But unfortunately, they haven't been.
No.
And so in doing that, that's what, that's crony capitalism right there. That's not free market, that's not allowing these companies to suffer for the things that they've done. You know, to be responsible. I mean, there's so many instances of companies doing this, like Fruit of a Loom, had a disastrous experience in Michigan, it was covered up. They, they, a lot of people were sick, and that got into their body as well. You know, I mean, there's, there's a lot. If these companies had been, if we had held them to, you know, better standards, where they had to have money in a fund to pick up stuff like this, or, or have better care, or have better regulations within their own company, don't you think we'd have less bills like this?
Yes.
Yeah, because the reality is, I'm a mom, I have kids, I know what my kids have been, what my kids can do. You know, like, let's be realistic, kids create stuff because they don't understand. So you, it's your job to teach them how to have personal responsibilities. None of these companies do, the government always bails them out, which means the American people. Which means, you know, we pay really high taxes, and for what? To, to protect other countries and not ourselves? To bail out Exxon, and BP, and now this railroad company? Who's bailing out you or me? When people try to have to file bankruptcy because they, they can't even feed their families on sixteen fifty an hour? Who's, who's responsible for that? Is it the person who's trying to get a better job, or tried to maybe go to college so they could get a better job, but couldn't juggle both of those, or the payment? They don't get bailed out. But corporations do. Lobbyists get helped them to get bailed out. Look at this, look at the tobacco companies, you know what I mean? Look at all the damage that could have been avoided if companies were allowed to be held to a higher standard than what they have been.
That's true.
So as a libertarian, these would make our country better. It will never happen, I mean, the reality is, it will not. Do you honestly think lobbyists, and Congress, and rich people are gonna let this happen? Absolutely not. Do you honestly think companies like Walmart, who are one of the biggest contributors, along with Amazon, who I worked for for five years, do you honestly think that tho, those companies are gonna be held accountable? Do you, do you not think that they're not gonna get bailed out?
Nope, sooner or later.
Yeah, because why not? Because they employ so many people, they have to be protected. What about the people? I mean, my dad was a truck driver for forty years. And my dad, um, he was a union truck driver, so he was a Teamster. So CF was one of the companies, by the way, that was in green, along with yellow. But CF was a company, and they took all of their money and put it to all of the non-union companies that they had, okay?
Uh-uh.
And then CF never had to pay a pension, never had to pay anybody, they stuck their gates, filed bankruptcy, and flicked every single truck driver off who'd been driving for them for years. Seriously.
That's, yeah, that's-
Do you know that Obama cut the Teamsters' pensions down? My dad's eighty, he's gonna be eighty-four soon. They cut his pension down because they said he made too much.
That's not good, they, they should be able to get what they earned.
Right, but they can't, because guess what? That company was allowed to screw over all of their employees, and put all of their assets into CF, I mean, not CF, CSE, CSW, you know, CSX, all of those companies that were non-union companies.
Oh.
And so all of these guys, and men and women both, were screwed out of their pensions. People who were about to retire, or who had already retired, none of that was protected. So who's at fault? The truck drivers that are getting stuff from here to there? Companies that are allowed to file Chapter eleven bankruptcy? You know, think about that. Think about how terrible that is for all of these men and women who lost everything that they worked their whole lives for.
Yes.
The lobbyists push for things in this country. The things that break us down are us allowing two parties to dictate our lives. We allow them to, to cause friction between us as people, and they do whatever they want, and we just suffer through whatever it is.
Yep.
I mean, I'm not trying to be like a bitch, but these are, our government, people think that they're helping us, that's actually the opposite of true. And it's really sad. Because this isn't stuff that's happening to the CEOs, or the, uh, it's happening to the American people.
Yep.
Every single day, all the time.
So how should we, what should we do about that? Should we stop all lobbying altogether, or what's the-
Yes. We should absolutely stop allowing lobbyists. Because here's the thing, so much of our government is so corrupt because they make money off of being in office. I do not like AOC, let me be really, really clear. I think she's nuttier than a fruitcake, most of the time. But occasionally, I see lucid moments of reality that is true. So she stood up at one point, and this is what won the hearts of people. She stood up and said that, and I agreed with her on, and this is the only thing I've ever agreed with her on. But she said that we should, that Congress and the Senate, all of them, should not be able to profit from being in office, I agree. You're not supposed to, if you decide to become a civil servant, you should not be doing that because you're gonna get rich, right?
Yep.
You should do that because you wanna help fellow people, that's why it's a service position, you know?
Yep.
Because you wouldn't expect a police officer, or a fireman, to be rich, right? You would expect them to have just, you know, you're, you're, they're, they don't become a fireman because their goal is to be rich. They became a fire- They wanna help people, right?
Yep.
So why are- So, why are we allowing politicians to, um, money? Do you know how much the Clintons had before they started office?
No, what was it?
Four million dollars. Do you know what they had after Bill left office? What their combined assets were?
No.
Over twenty million dollars. You can absolutely look this up.
Wow.
Why, how in the hell did our president get that much money? Look, the facts are, you have to follow a money trail. You have to see where these things are going. People who are compromised because they're getting money from a lobbyist should not be allowed to represent anybody. Ever. In that way, they should not be able to allow, um, to represent the public. I mean, who, who do you want on there? You know, uh, who would you want in Congress? Do you want somebody that is there for them, there for you as the people? Or somebody who could be compromised because maybe they have stock in a particular company? Or, you know, maybe because their, their wife is doing their book, or she's representing them in a, as somebody else in a civil suit? Do you understand what I mean, like a specific company?
Yeah, conflicts of interest.
Right, if you're the president and you're not allowed to have conflicts of interest, why can't we ask? Because honestly, the president is supposed to be a figurehead, right? He's not supposed to have, that's the whole point. That is the reason, like, if you read about George Washington, okay? And you, you will see that he didn't want the position because he never wanted to be a king. He just wanted to be a figurehead for this country. That's why he accepted the position, because that's what he was meant to be. If you are in a party and you feel like, I can't vote for this person, I, I have to vote for choice B because I can't allow choice A to win, you have completely missed the part of what our, being in our country means.
Sure.
The president should never have so much power in this country that you're afraid who's going to get elected. It should never matter. What should matter is who are your state senators? Who are your state representatives? Who's your mayor? Who are your council people? Because that's where you live. That is where you pay more taxes than anything. That is where your children go to school. That is where you work, and what's your own line, but still, you work there, right? That is where you're building your future, is where you live. And you're more concerned with which president is, is running? Which person is running, who's supposed to be a figurehead position? That, to me, is wild. That's so stupid. And a waste of a vote. You know?
Yup. Yup.
You're, you're allowing people you don't agree with to write your policies.
Yes. It's probably easier for a lot of people.
That's the problem. People have forgotten what this country needs. Not just to us as a country, but to people who are coming here. And honestly, our country does better when we have an influx of immigrants. I have no problem with people coming here. Because regardless of whether you're illegal or you're not, if you're a criminal, we're going to catch you. You're going to be caught, or you're not. We have criminals we haven't caught yet here, right?
Yup.
But if you allow people to work and live and come here, all you're doing is benefiting this country because when you have immigrants, that is an influx of new ideas. New ways of looking at things. And that is what builds our country. It, it's just... It's just wild. I just don't understand. I think people want to stay in their bubble and, in their prejudice and be angry and pissed off at life. You know, they want a reason to be mad because people tell them you need a reason to be mad.
Yup.
And for me, I just want people to mind their business, and I mind mine, you know? Like, do what you want. Like, if I live, let's say I live next to, being a racist is a choice. And I can ignore that. I can ignore, as long as people are not infringing on me, my home, my life, my property, my children, I don't care what you do. You can hang up a Nazi flag in your front yard and be a total tool, and that is your business.
Yup.
As long as you are not physically forcing your beliefs on me, coming to my house and knocking on my door, eh, or yelling and screaming, threatening, any of that, as long as none of that's happening, you can do what you want to do with your life. I'm just going to be over here living the dream, bro.
Yup. Sure.
I've tried to teach my kids that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the heart of the libertarian philosophy.
It is, it should be.
So, what are your future plans for dealing with this stuff? Are you planning to run for office again, or are you going to try different approaches?
Well, here's the thing, this last year, um, I had to have that surgery. And I put off that surgery until after the election because, um, I really wanted to run, and I wanted to win. And even though I didn't, um, that's okay. Uh, I thought about running again, and I actually had, sat down, my husband and I talked, talked to my kids, because their input matters. And I was like, look, you guys know what the other woman went through on that council. If I was to run, and this time it would be for a ward, I know I could win. I, I have no doubt about that. You know, I know who I am, I'm really good at this. Um, but, the thing is, is that if I win, I am literally sitting on a council of hostile males. Except for Dustin, he's not like that. Why in the hell would I want to do that? Who asks for that kind of stress in their life?
Yup.
I would be, like, the only voice, um, dissenting voice on that. And let's be realistic, I don't, who wants to put up with that? Do you know how hard that is? Like, I, I have seen them, these, some of these guys, tell the woman that's on there right now that her vote only is, like, only counts for half of those. Because she is the lone voice in a room full of people like that. You know what I mean?
Sure, sure.
And that's really hard. And I know it's stressful for her, and a lot of women who watch the city council meetings know just how awful they are. That misogyny is right there in all of people. And I don't want to do that. What is the point of me putting that effort into something that, in an old boys' club, I can't break that? That, that would make, if the people that had run with me, some of these people had won, it would be a different conversation. Not even that I ran, like, that I won, just certain other people. Then it would be a different conversation. It would be, we would be in a different place, you know what I mean?
Yup.
But knowing that it's going to be the same stuff, different day, that was a conversation that I really had to sit down and think about, you know?
Sure.
And, you know, make my decision in that area. So, I have a lot of respect for people who run, especially who aren't well-known, or maybe they're shy.
Yup.
Like the other candidate, she's kind of shy. But, um, yeah, I will absolutely, maybe I'll do, maybe I'll be a state rep, I don't know. I know it will be a hard position for me. I know there would be a fight, because I'm a libertarian, I'd be running against a Republican and a Democrat, you know?
Yup.
And that's another thing with politics, I don't understand why it has to get so nasty. Like, they bring up stuff from your past, and they talk about, it's terrible.
Yup, it is.
I don't understand why that matters. Like, look, if you want to ask me a question, I will straight out tell you my life and the things that I've gone through. You can look at pieces of paper that are, you know, written down about things that have happened to me in my life, but you might not know how I got there, or what happened to bring me to that point. You know what I'm saying?
So, Erin, if you're not running for office currently, is there any way our audience can support you and your efforts?
Yes, actually, I have a TikTok, it's called Libertarian Yoder. And I talk about all different stuff. I think if I do anything right now, though, I really, I really think we need to have some regulations in the state of Ohio for the EPA, because I don't like the way that they're handling things. And I, I didn't know how bad it was until my septic decided to die. And I have had to go through so many problems and find out, like, even in other states, they have regulations for how your septic is supposed to be, but Ohio's are crazy. And it feels like, if you, if you have to do, if you follow what they want you to do in order to have this, then it's because somebody out there is making some extra cash flow on the side. And I'm not talking about the inspectors, I'm talking about, you know, um, EPA or the companies that make these products, because their regulations are ridiculous. And so, I think that, you know, that's something that needs to be addressed.
Okay.
And, so...
So, you talk about this on TikTok?
Yeah.
Okay.
I really actually like TikTok, because I think it's a really good platform for everybody and for, like, free speech. But honestly, I'm going to say that especially women.
Oh.
It's like Facebook owns Instagram, right?
Yup.
And then you've got Elon Musk that owns Twitter, and I'm not even touching that one with a ten-foot pole, because that's a hot nut.
Yup.
But, um, with TikTok, and I don't care who says it, if it's owned by the Chinese or not, none of that matters. If people, if people need to understand, if you were on a smartphone, if you have a laptop, if you have any kind of device hooked up to the internet, guess what? It is Chinese-made, or parts of it are. People need to calm down, the Chinese have less interest in, I mean, let's be realistic. They have less interest in checking us out. We actually, Facebook has done more to, um, sell our information to companies and the government than any other company in history. Not even Apple sells out its people like Facebook does. Seriously, and Google is another one. I have a Facebook account, I have Google, I have all of that. I also know they're probably selling my information, my internet searches, all of that, to other people. That's a fact. And, and Facebook has even acknowledged that. People are worried about TikTok, they really need to be worried about Mark Zuckerberg. And, I mean, the guy that owns TikTok went above and beyond to show people, hey, we have these information farms here in Texas, and all of your stuff is there. It's not even in another country. And people still lost their minds. They still were like, we really need to have the government to be involved. I, the government is never a good thing to be involved in anything, ever.
There you go, there you go. So Libertarian Yoder?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Okay, Erin, we thank you for coming on the podcast today and talking about your background, your experiences, and your views.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate that. Was this a live podcast?
No, it's not live, it's, it's not live.
That's good.
It, it's their latest, so don't worry. All right, we wish you all the best in whatever you do next, and your family, and your professional life, and everything else.
Hey, thank you very much. Do you mind sending me a link to yours?
Of course, yes, of course.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. I would, I would like for people to hear this and explore your views as well.
Yes, the more people we can hear, the better.
So, I think that's true.
Yes, all right, Erin, thanks again, and have a great day.
You too.
Bye now.